And bring the planning commission meeting for August 23rd to order. We'll start with a roll call.
Sure. Evening, Chair Lynn.
Here.
Vice Chair Lerner.
Here.
Commissioner Polito.
Here.
Commissioner Tonelli.
Here.
Commissioner Bryant.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum. Thank you.
All right. I love that. This is a trend I like. All right. Item number two is public comments for items that aren't on the agenda. What we do here is make sure that if anybody has an item to bring up, that either feedback for something that's been on before, or an awareness of something that we need to look into, or just general information, and we have a spot on the agenda for that. So I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section for that. See if there's anybody here for that. I don't see anybody. All right, we do. All right, we gotta take her. Go ahead and introduce yourself, and then we'll listen. All right, is Richard's microphone on? There we go. There you go, Richard. Now you're live.
Hi, my name is Richard Schmidt. Just a point of information that I found out. There's a, I've taken interest in the planning commission since the, I guess, the whole SB9, SB10 things going on, and our housing element.
Right.
Anyway, there's an architect, that's not an architect, a surveyor, who is sending letters to most people in Atherton, who say, "I want to split your lot under SB9." And so I sort of followed up a little bit. He's got two people that he was willing to offer as references. And so he said the process takes nine to 12 months. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention that this is going on. And I was curious as far as what your take is on it, as far as whether the process takes nine to 12 months to get approved for a lot split under SB9.
Not that I know of. I mean, not the approval of the lot split. He may be talking about what it takes after they get approved to build something. But, you know, we get lot splits regularly, and they come up before us, just like the item today. So it shouldn't, it won't be that, it doesn't take that long to get before us. Now, depending on what they're asking for and how it works on that site, it could be, there could be some issues, but there haven't been so far.
Are you seeing more?
Yes, SB9, the SB9s were seeing some more. The problem with SB9 from a standpoint of utilization within, with Atherton is that the person has to stay on the property for a certain period of time after it's split. So someone who buys the property, that works for, someone who buys it and splits it, that's fine. But the person who's living there right now, like maybe it's a senior person who wants to get out of their home, they can't, very often, they need the money out of it to go wherever they're going to go, and they can't stay there the extended time.
What's the time period, do you know?
I think, what is it, two years? I think it's two years. Two years.
Three years.
Three, yeah, three.
Ben C. intent.
Right.
You're talking to see after the approval or?
After the approval of the final map. After the approval of the final map.
One of the techniques I've seen, I've been told about was an individual, is a developer will go in and find a property and buy it, and then get a person to buy it from them. And that person goes through the process of the lot split. So they're buying into a half of the, half of the property from the very beginning. So they're going to qualify for the three years. It's not going to be a big deal for them. And then they get the advantage of that.
Okay.
But, go ahead.
At the last planning commission meeting, we brought up that these flyers were circulating in town. I read it, I received one personally, and so I read it. To me, it seemed like there were a number of statements in it that were not actually quite correct. So that's the one comment I had about that.
I think what, also what it can do is, in certain municipalities that are bigger, and maybe they have a lot of other things going on, maybe their timeline is padded for that. And in this one, it's relatively straightforward so far.
Okay. Well, this guy was in Napa, and he picked on Atherton, obviously. But he's also got, he says, clients all over the Bay Area.
Yeah.
And so there's two, and the two that he started working on in Atherton.
Right. Yeah, we had heard about it.
You're aware of it.
Yeah, great. But thank you. Thank you. We are aware of it.
Richard, so this was just an open solicitation, nothing you sought out on your own.
Oh, no, open solicitation, yeah, just sending it to everybody. You guys probably got it somewhere.
Yeah, it's like a blanket mailing. Yeah, okay.
All right.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate it.
We happen to know about that one, but that's exactly what that spot on the agenda is for. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll close the public comment section, since there's nobody online and nobody's running up here behind him. So I'll close the public comment section and bring it back for item number three, the approval of the minutes. I didn't see, I didn't get the approval, I didn't get minutes in my, in my printed packet. In the, so if somebody can give me a copy, I'll look at it real quick. Thank you. I went online today, and I didn't find them.
We published it.
I didn't see anything reading through them that stood out to me.
They look okay to me.
I'm reading real quick. Okay, you go. All right, thank you. Thank you.
I'm reading them. I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded, and my Evelyn Wood training has not failed me, so that works. All right, roll call, please.
Did Commissioner Polito, you motioned it? Commissioner Polito? For your rule, yes.
Aye.
The?
Mr. Bryant.
Commissioner Bryant?
Aye.
Commissioner Tonelli?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lerner?
Aye.
Chair Lynn?
Yes, after reading it. Thank you.
Motion passes.
I want to make sure Tonelli didn't slip anything in. All right, item number four, public hearing, which is the, which is the star of the show this evening. We've got a lot line redesignation for 80 Coughlin Lane. And so I'll go ahead, for the process, what we use on this is that we get an overview from staff. And then if there's questions from the commission to the staff, then we'll go through that. Then we open up the public comment section, and we'll hear from the applicant first. And if there are anybody comes in, or comes online, they can talk, they have something on the item. And if anybody comes in later, I'm going to go through this whole process. Everybody's on the same page of what the process is. And then we'll close the public comment section, bring it back for the commission for discussion, action as appropriate. That'll be the process that we use. That's, that'll make it so that everybody gets a chance. So with that, we'll go ahead and go with the staff overview. Rada, are you on this one?
Yeah, I'm on this one, and I'm going to share screen. Oh, thanks. Yay. Thank you for Sean Manalow. He's the associate planner helping me today. Sean, can you scroll to the map, please? The project tonight is a request for a lot line redesignation for 80 Coughlin Lane. As you can see in the map in front of you, per the Atherton Municipal Code, the line marked in red is designated to be the lot front. The applicant is seeking the lot line redesignation to allow the lot line that's marked in yellow to be the lot front. They are requesting this to have a better alignment for their proposed future development project. They're taking advantage of the reorientation to gain more light, and that is a more southern-facing property alignment. In order for the commission to make findings to approve a lot line redesignation, Sean, can you scroll to the findings part, please? The commission needs to make two specific findings. One, that it would be, that the proposed redesignation would not be detrimental to, or injurious to persons, people, improvement in the vicinity. And also, it would not be detrimental to the public health, peace, and safety comfort, and general welfare movement of vehicles, people, goods in and around the subject property. The applicant has gone ahead and circulated neighbor notification letters on their own. As part of this meeting, we have also circulated 500 feet radius notice to the owners. In the packet, you can see that the immediate neighbors to this property have written to staff expressing that they have no objections to this lot line redesignation, and that they support it. And other neighbors have also been notified, and the applicant has given us a log of their actions to proactively seek out, you know, and update their neighbors in this, in and around the vicinity. Based on what we're hearing back from the community, and what we're seeing as the action of, action from the applicant, staff can support that this finding can be made, that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't make any, it wouldn't be detrimental to the surroundings. And the site itself is large enough to accommodate its own vehicular circulation within the parcel as it develops, so it wouldn't be detrimental to that, and this finding can be made. The second finding is, that the planning commission needs to make is that the proposed redesignation will be in accord to the general plan and the purposes of this title. Staff makes certain policy findings that are part of the general plan of the, that speaks to the effect that we would maintain the existing neighbor environment, and that we would accommodate privacy as a factor into all of these minor lot line redesignations. And we support that the finding can be made. And we would like to recommend approval through the commission tonight. And you have the choice to approve, deny, or modify the request as you deem fit. And this ends the staff report.
Any questions? Now, this is one of those technicalities that I wish we could come up with a way not to have it brought to us. But I think there are situations where it needs to be brought to us, maybe that's what's.
Yeah, it is written in the code. It was brought, I think, to the commission way back in, I found some staff reports, I think, 2007 and '08, where the request has been made. And I think the trigger is, if there's a new development that comes, and it reorients the front and rear setbacks, the only committee that can approve it for the redesignation is the planning commission.
I understand why, this is a classic one where it's not that big of a deal.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Is this normal to decide somewhere arbitrarily what the front of a lot is?
No. The municipal code has a specific definition where the narrowest portion of the lot facing the public right-of-way is designated as the lot front. That applies to all parcels in Atherton. And in this parcel, the lot front is actually marked in the red line because that's the narrowest portion facing Coughlin Lane. And the current home faces that, and the front setback of 60 feet required is offset from that line. The applicants want to reorient and realign that major axis, and staff cannot approve that because that would then mean that that would be the lot front, and the setbacks change, all the development standards change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is one of those things where, where the setback amounts that we, that we have actually creates the need, rather than, because of the big setbacks that we have on certain orientations. So one of the things, one of the things in general that comes to lot splits and things like that, at some point, I'd like to talk about that, just in terms of what our setbacks are, and how that, how that impact, we've had two or three lot splits where that got to be an issue also.
Yes.
The setbacks were an issue. So there could be some things that we might want to look into to help ourselves do a better job of keeping single-family homes easy to make in the town, so that, so that that's easier than dividing lots and putting lots up on them. So, you know, the housing element would be, is met a lot of different ways. And since the town is oriented towards single-family homes, easier single-family home development seems like a good strategy at some point.
With different setback requirements and development standards, probably.
All right, well, we'll talk about that some other time. Let's go ahead, and any other questions?
Not with staff, no.
All right, good. Then I'll go ahead and open the public comment section, and we'll hear from the applicant or their representative.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Staff. I am Andrew Skirman, Principal at Skirman Architects in San Francisco. We've done probably about 10 houses over the years in Atherton, usually by changing the front of the house to another direction because we really think it's best, from a solar point of view, energy point of view, to have the view and the living room face south. Currently, the existing house and the nature of the lot, the existing house faces west. And as you know, as Atherton residents, you've got to have your drapes drawn in the afternoon. If you face south, it's possible to see the view in the afternoon. So it's, the lot is oriented north-south, and that's why the existing house faces west. So by changing it, and we need to get the front yard and the backyard to be 50 feet rather than 60 feet to make a house facing south fit on the lot. And that's the purpose of this exercise. It's really not on a street. This house is at the end of a cul-de-sac. So, you know, if you were really, you know, driving down Atherton Avenue, it would be a different situation. So we appreciate your, your help in allowing us to reorient the house. And it will be good from a solar point of view, energy point of view, and it'll be, it'll be a better house in the end. So that is the reason why we're doing this. It's exactly what you said, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. It's about the, the front yard and backyard, 60 feet going to the 50-feet side yard designation.
All right. And the address will stay the same, correct?
It is. It will stay the same, yes.
Yeah, I actually had a question about that. I should have asked about staff. The addresses are important for emergency services, so does the fire department have to sign off on this?
Not at this stage when they come into development. The fire department is one of the reviewers at the building permits stage, but not for lot line redesignation because it doesn't change the access of the house. It just changes, changes the development standards for the inside of the lot.
It's the same access from the street as it is now.
That's why I want to make sure the address is the same, so it didn't confuse the fire departments by going up and down the other street, and they're going like, "Where's the driveway?" Well, it's off of Cochran, so as long as it stays.
It's the same address.
Yeah, great. Yep, good.
I did have a question about, when I read through the packet, thought your outreach to the neighbors was great. Seems like you contacted everybody. I think it was the folks at 90 Coughlin that had a request or wanted to make some kind of a change, but it didn't get specific?
It was specific. You can see there in, on the site plan, on the site diagram proposed, that there are two pickleball courts on the lower right-hand corner of the lot. Originally, we wanted them parallel to the south property line. And we moved them to the east property line for 90 Coffin Lane's purposes. They were worried about the noise of the ball.
And that was going to be one of my next questions. I thought the positioning of that was fine. And I know that has nothing to do with the lot line redesignation. But it turns out, I mean, looking at it, it looks like that's probably the one appropriate spot without really having the noise encroach on the neighbors. So I can see where they were concerned about that.
It's next to a road there, so it helps. And that was what 90 Coffin was concerned about.
Okay.
And we accommodated their concern. They're happy now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Hi, this is not a question, but it is an observation. There's, you know, quite a few of these homes that are being torn down, and new homes are being built. And what's happening is that they have pools that they're moving to a different location, same as this one's here. So one thing, a suggestion that I would make is you consider using the old pool as a drywell. This is very flat land, provided that it meets all the requirements with the, with the water, you know, the runoff water regulations. I'd consider that as a way of channeling, getting rid of some of that water.
Unfortunately, it's, it would be in the access to the garage in.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about piping it in.
Oh, sure.
Piping in there.
We'd be happy to do that, yes.
All right. All right, anything else? No, good. All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that, whose meter is ticking that has to be up here? No, okay, shoot, you know, his rates are higher because he spoke. All right, is there anyone else to speak on this item? Nobody's racing towards the microphone. There's nobody online to speak to it, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion, action as appropriate. So the only thing I want to, I want to double-click on is the precedence of this because on this lot, on this block, and I did the tour, and it was very clear, it's not going to affect, you know, anybody really, except the pickleball. As a pickleball player, I know that that can get pretty noisy. That'll be the breakthrough in pickleball technology, then come out the quiet ball. But, but other than that, all the other aspects of this are pretty straightforward. It's just, I want to make sure we're not setting a precedence where we'll be stuck with always approving a modified setback.
No, the part of this approval recommendation comes from the neighborhood outreach and what we hear back from them, and also specifically looking at the new orientation, what its impact is for a new two-story house, and with windows looking onto neighbors and understanding what that would impact in terms of its location and its vicinity. And I know that there are some existing lots that already just retain these orientations, and they've been like that for a long time. We're seeing some examples. But it would be an objective review with every applicant coming our way.
Very good. That's the only double-click I had. Any other comments?
I was just going to say that I agree with you that as, as we get into the details of the housing element, we're going to end up, right, looking at all of these setbacks.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, just to piggyback on to what you said, we don't want to set a precedent, but at the same time, this seemed to make sense when I looked at the plans. Plus, you're increasing the setback to your two closest neighbors on Coughlin and the property at Selby and Coughlin. So that's a benefit to them, and it looked like the setback in the back that is reduced to 50 feet is less of an impact, though, because that's more of an open space area on the new plan to the houses on Bohemus. So in this particular case, it just seemed to make sense and benefits the neighbors.
All right, very good. Nothing else? You know, if we talk for another 20 minutes, we can make this a longer meeting.
Just trying to chew up time.
All right, yeah, in another five minutes, we actually get paid for this. Not really. All right, all right, I need a motion. All right, I'll make the motion. I move the planning commission, find the lot line designation to be categorized exempt from the SEQUAS section of 15305, and approve the lot line redesignation to designate the northern, northerly property line at the front of the lot line at 80 Coughlin Lane. Subject to condition, attached certificate, and based on the findings, and for the reasons incorporated into the amazing staff report.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All right, roll call, please.
Chair Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryant?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Polito?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonelli?
Yes.
This motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for driving all the way down. Thank you. Thank you. I don't, there are some forms here. I don't have to sign these, do I?
So that is, the certificate will be signed by Brittany.
Okay, just want to make sure. Sometimes I get one that I have to sign.
Yes, those would be for subdivisions, I think.
Very good. Okay, item number five, staff reports.
No staff report updates, excepting a look ahead for September. Planning commission, we're looking at a possibly TPZ exception. We'll know for sure tomorrow.
Excuse me, what exception?
Tree protection zone exception.
TBZ.
For, sorry, TPZ, my bad. And we are having Brittany present a part of the ADU ordinance or the housing element to the planning commission. She is out on vacation. She returns on the 1st of September, and we'll have a, we'll give you an email look ahead for the agenda for September. But that's about it so far, I guess, yeah.
Right. And the, I know that there was, there was a session on that. I didn't see all the nuances of the outcomes. Do we believe that the suggested revisions that the town council made will be accepted by the state?
We couldn't anticipate that at this point, and I don't know if staff can speak for HCD in general. We can just, I think, send our documents back. But we have, we're working on the SEQUAS site inclusion, and we did a notice on Monday for additional sites to be included for multifamily and SB9s. And we are receiving callbacks from the applicants. Not "we" as in, it would be the city manager's office and town.
All right, well, as I'm seeing more and more news on the builders remedy in Menlo Park, I want to make sure we got our act together.
We are receiving subdivisions and SB9 inquiries at this point.
Yeah.
We got applications for traditional subdivision and an SB9 as of last week and this week. So we're seeing an increasing number of those coming.
You got to get our act together.
Yeah, I think that the, my reading of the situation is that we're not going to get a certified element without actually making a commitment to
Yeah.
land for multifamily.
Yeah, right.
And no one is, seems to be ready to do that.
That's a problem.
Which implies that we're going to, we're in stasis.
Right. Even a overlay zone with the capabilities, it makes us, it makes us land on our feet. But that way, a person who owns a property gets to keep it and rebuild it if they want to rebuild it. But anyway, we'll find out more about, and we can make our recommendation.
Right, yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
First part of this is kind of dumb, but this fee that we're investigating, is it referred to as an inclusionary housing fee or an exclusionary housing fee? What's the proper term?
Inclusionary housing fee. Basically, what it means is, I think, for jurisdictions.
Well, I don't know what it means. What does it mean?
I think the, the term inclusionary is to set, the fees are set aside to build inclusionary housing typologies for below-market-rate housing. So jurisdictions that collect the fee set it aside to build inclusionary housing.
So are you, or whoever is doing the legwork on this, prepared to bring something to the council next month, an amount?
I think the study will be presented to the council. I'm not sure if it's September, but it might be October. But I don't, I don't have an overview of that timeline right away. But I can ask Brittany to write you an email and give you a timeline.
So the, this would be added to the building fees for any project in Atherton?
To build, generate revenue to be used for offset?
To be used to help solve Atherton's housing crisis. So I've been told that Redwood City's fee is $20 a foot. You heard Sally say the other day, we had last meeting, there's 104 active sites in Atherton. And I'm pretty, if I had to guess, the smallest one's probably 5,000 square feet. So at $20 a feet, $20 a foot, we would generate millions every year. And I think the only way we'll get an approved housing element is if the town starts underwriting, comes up with a plan to underwrite some multifamily housing. And I've said from the beginning, back when I was on the council, that a handful of well-designed, controlled, properly situated multifamily projects could be vastly better for the town of Atherton than the craziness we're going through, trying to promote lot splits and ADUs with four-foot setbacks and 25, 30-foot height.
I was, I agree with you, because if we get the right types of multifamily.
I have properties on the El Camino. There's one for sale, it's been for sale now for a number of months. The only thing holding that thing up is the termites holding hands.
True, I've seen that.
Pathetic. And, and the town could buy that property with general fund money, and then repay the general fund with this inclusionary fee.
Right.
And if we had taken an approach like that to the state to begin with, we'd have.
Right, that's exactly right. That's exactly, I agree with you. I totally agree. We, and we had, you know, we had proposed some things here that didn't get.
Your overlay was the right, was the right call.
Right.
Rick has got everybody, Rick and a handful of residents have everybody bullied.
Yeah, well, we got to, we got to, well, we got to take care of it, or else we're going to get bullied back by the state. All right, anything else?
I have one other question.
Okay, good. Well, let me go to, let me officially go to item number six, commissioner report. That way, we're. Well, let me go to, let me, let me officially go to, uh, item number six, Commissioner Report. That way we're, we're taking good the agenda. Go ahead, Commissioner Report.
You sent us an email, uh, about, um, one thirty-five Karen Way?
Yes.
Why? It's not on the agenda and I, I don't think it was on last.
So one thirty-five Karen Way was, uh, uh, a request for, uh, wha- what was going on with the property opposite their home. And Lisa Mary is on the call today. Uh, typically when we get calls like that, it is redirected to code enforcement and so the agenda focuses on what happens with the public comment coming in. But everything that gets routed to you by email, I send it immediately to you as a liaison to respond. And we can answer any questions at this format for the report. I can tell you that the gentleman had a number of questions regarding the existing fence and the tennis court and that property and the code enforcing officer has been, McNamara's chief called him and met with him and the fence is brought into compliance. While, uh, we have a planning permit for a full site development under review and we have, uh, for that same site, they're retaining the tennis court and they're, uh, seeking approval for a two-story main house at JADU and ADU on that lot as the new owners are coming in. At, at this point, we're just, we, they're waiting for approvals from planning and building, right? And Sean is the reviewer on that project, so we are in close contact with that.
So it's information only, basically.
It was information only and typically we handled it, we handled it at staff level between, uh, code enforcement and us because we want to work with the residents and the owners to bring things into compliance. Um, unless it goes, blows out of proportion.
She technically addressed something to us as a planning commission, isn't that what I understood about it? She, she was asking, how does the planning commission deal with this? So it was actually, it, it was actually trying to find action and went to the wrong spot, but, but redirected, but I think Rada was just trying to make sure that if she came to us, we knew about it.
Yeah, I think your email as the planning commission at CI dot Atherton is listed for noticing and for public comment. And staff liaisons, um, our, our staff liaisons just distribute that and we want to work with what you're thinking instead of them directly calling you and talking to you about it to try and see if we have tools to help the residents first.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I have one for Rada. So just going back to the question about builders remedy. So I know that there's been a number of conversations, people coming in and talking with the city manager. But as of right now, there's been no legal filing for.
No, we don't have any builders remedy project on our desk as of this afternoon.
Well, it's a legal filing that they would do.
We did receive a subdivision project and we received inquiries for SB nines. We did, we receive inquiries for qualifiable SB nines at least two, two on an average per ten days. And we are reviewing now, um, a traditional subdivision, just like you approved in March. We will bring that in, uh, hopefully October. Because they have to go through, uh, lot adjustment and then come for a subdivision after.
All right, cool. All right, good. All right, then, uh, let's get the, let's get the housing plan to us and we'll try to make some recommendations that the town council will, uh, use and save, save ourselves some more grief.
They won't do it until, no, there's a problem.
Well, well, I, I, I'll, I'll try to make one. All right, any, anything else then?
None from.
All right, then, uh, uh, item seven again, this one takes forever. I don't, uh, need a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Oh, that was quick. Clearly the new guy. Moving seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, let's get out of here.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Rada. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Richard. Appreciate the comments.
Uh, if you come to, uh, the Los, Los Altos show, Corvette show, look for me.
I will, I will. As a matter of fact, I'll send you, uh, when you're there, find out.